I wonder if everyone can take their seats, please, so we can begin. We've got a full agenda tonight and we want to make sure that we have ample opportunity to talk about all the issues. I want to go ahead and call the Bloomington City Council Committee of the Whole to order, and Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Alderman Schmidt. Here. Alderman Black. Alderman Fazini.
Here.
Alderman Thrun.
Here.
Alderman Lowes.
Here.
Alderman Sage.
Here.
Alderman Millamway.
Here.
Alderman Sterns.
Here.
Alderman McDade.
Here.
And we're going to start with public commentary, and we have Alton Franklin.
Would you please step forward? And I've got your, I think there's only one comment card for this evening. Thank you.
My name is Alton Franklin. I live at 508 Patterson Drive here in Bloomington. Pleased to see that we've made a turn in our dealing with issues and coming with the Committee of the Whole versus the, in my humble view, fractured system with the subcommittees. It's kind of tough for citizens to make time for all the different committee meetings. I think this is a lot more productive. Just a couple of things I wanted to touch on. With regards to the police and fire pension funding, I've looked through the literature that was put out, and I've got some real issues with the thought of property tax. I do believe, Mayor, that you've made your position pretty clear on that, and I'm pretty sure most folks know how I feel about it, but one of the things with regards to this specific instance, in the recommendation that was come up with what's termed Plan A, the cumulative total is almost 25 percent. And that's a pretty big chump out of folks that are still kind of working their way back from the recession. The idea of the utility tax, I think, makes a lot more sense in that it's a transitional item. We can go with a halfway and cover the pension fund to the amount that'll let us go to 100 percent, and then move to even bump that again. It's not a substantial amount of money. It's going to pinch some folks at the lower end, but they're, there's nothing, there's no pain, no gain, so to speak. And with regards to that, that gives us an added source of, an added resource that we can use for additional public works, that being the sewer that we're looking at a rather substantial sum to address as well. Just to touch on the library board property tax, there are just standard increases in even coming off of the regular stuff that we're doing. I believe that there's a vital service that's provided by the, by the library, and I don't have any qualms in saying that I would endorse the small amount that they're asking to increase the levy. It makes sense that they're going to have to shift resources around to come up to date with more higher technology to address the way that things are done nowadays, so. And in regards to that, with the property tax levy as a whole, I really would like to see it remain stable until we do see that we've got consistent growth over a, over a recognizable period of time, rather than just saying, oh, okay, we're doing fine now. Let's, let's go ahead and come out there and reach into the pockets again. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alton. Moving along, we have approval of minutes from the aldermanic committees, and that would be Public Safety, August 13th, 2013; Administration and Finance, September 10th, 2013; and Infrastructure, September 16th. I think there's a typo on our thing. That would be also 2013. We're not really talking about, what, a millennium from now, so I think we can, in reasonable ness, assume that we're talking about 2013. Is there a motion to approve the, the minutes as presented?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Move by Alderman Schmidt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Fazini. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please follow the roll?
Alderman Black, Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Black.
Yes.
Alderman Fazini.
Yes.
Alderman Thrun.
Yes.
Alderman Lowes.
Yes.
Alderman Sage.
Yes.
Alderman Millamway.
Yes.
Alderman Sterns.
Aye.
Alderman McDade.
Yes.
Thank you. Now, we move to the recommended police and fire pension funding policy. We start out with a brief presentation, and then we have council discussion, and I think what, as much as possible, in speaking to staff this afternoon and City Manager David Hales, the thing that, and also our council, the most helpful we can be is giving our staff clear guidance as to what we prefer and what direction we'd like, what options we'd like to see as we move forward to the November 12th meeting. So the more specific we can be, the more clear we can be, especially if we've got a consensus that will help city staff and the city manager put together policies. This is obviously a time where we, as elected officials, need to step up to the plate and make some tough choices and tough decisions, either in terms of service cuts or in terms of tax or fee increases, because unlike the federal government of the state of Illinois, we are at the bottom of the federalism food chain, and we have to make things happen here. We can't print money, we can't dump it on anybody else, and we certainly don't want to keep pushing this ahead to future generations. So with that being said, turn it over to City Manager David Hales. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. We want to make sure that our presentations tonight are kept to a minimum so that we can really turn back to you, the council, for questions of staff, consultants, or anything that is being thrown out as a recommendation during the work session tonight. So to start us out, I'd like to ask Rebecca Seelman to come forward. You remember her. She's from the Milliman, and she's a consulting actuary. She has a brief presentation. I think even two or three weeks ago, I shared with you a copy of even one of her first presentations that laid a lot of the groundwork for this discussion of pension funding. So we'll start with Becky. Afterwards, we're going to go to Patty and myself to kind of, for a little bit more, and then we'll be stopping, and as you see on the agenda, the bulk of this time is really for the council to ask questions and to talk about, you know, the recommendations we're providing to you tonight. So with that, turn the time over to Becky.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be back here. There it is, up on the, I also have paper copies, if any of you would prefer to have a paper copy in front of you. Okay. Let me skip over a page of small print and caveats and get to some issues that we have talked about, at least some of the group have talked about in previous sessions. We're talking about having the city adopt a formal policy for how you go about funding the police and fire pension plans. You are required by state statute to contribute a minimum amount, but it is not an amount that's designed to get the pension plans to be 100 percent funded, and the, the way in which the statutory minimum contribution is calculated has some other things that are not necessarily attractive to the city in terms of long-term budgeting. So what we're talking about this evening is a, a funding policy that you, the city, adopt that is designed to fund the plan a longer, a somewhat faster track than the statutory minimum, but that will get the pension plans to be fully funded in a manageable way in terms of your long-term budgetary outlook. And when thinking through the various aspects of a contribution policy, it needs to satisfy four general characteristics, and we use the LEAF acronym to talk about them. It needs to be, first of all, long-term in outlook. Pension obligations are accrued over a long time, they are paid out over a long time. When an actuary says long-term, we are not talking about months or years, we are talking about decades, we are talking about generations. And that's the timeframe in which a funding policy needs to be looking as well. It needs to be a policy that provides for intergenerational taxpayer equity. You ideally want the taxpayers who are living here now to be paying the costs of the pensions being earned now, so that nothing is being left over, we're not paying anything by future generations for costs that are being accrued right now. Unfortunately, you have a situation where that hasn't occurred in the past, the plans are not all that well-funded, and that means that prior generations of taxpayers did not pay the full freight, if you will, for the benefits that were earned while they were the taxpayers. So this generation now is faced with some catch-up. But if this generation doesn't make that, accomplish that catch-up, you're just leaving a problem for next generations. So it, a sound contribution policy needs to take into account that the right people are paying the right amounts and, and maintaining that equity. A good policy also needs to be a consistent process that you can follow year in and year out, not balancing your budget by figuring out as your very last thing how much you're going to contribute to the pension plans, but, but, but having a policy that tries to avoid gray hair and high blood pressure and wrinkles on the part of staff by not having too much year-to-year volatility in the contribution amount, by being relatively stable and predictable, unless some really big shock to the system happens, such as, you know, a market meltdown. So if the, the wider environment behaves relatively stably and investments don't, don't melt down the way they did a couple of years ago, a good contribution policy should result in stable and predictable contributions year in and year out. But, the final bit, flexibility. Every now and then, hopefully not all that often, but every now and then, some big thing comes along, whether it's a huge investment loss, maybe it's a huge investment gain. Unusual situations don't need to be bad things, they, you know, but things come along. Every now and then, benefit changes get, get put on you to take care of, but you don't have a say in the benefit changes, they're done at the statewide level. You need to be able to react, whether those changes are positive or negative from your point of view. The contribution policy can't be rigid so that it breaks under the strain of an unusual situation. It needs to have some flexibility built in. There are several different aspects of a, of a contribution policy, and these are the questions that I posed before to the group. How are you going to decide how much to contribute each year to the police and fire pension plans? You can, you have been contributing at least the statutory minimum contribution. That's your, that is your minimum obligation, you have no choice about that, but that's designed to get the plan to be 90 percent funded, and in such a way that contributions are expected to climb pretty rapidly in a couple of decades, not right away, but in a couple of decades. The alternative that we are proposing is that you have an actuarially determined amount and that, that follows, there are a couple of choices along the way, and, and these were basically the choices that we've gone through. Now, I know that, that subject of pension funding is a complicated, technical one, so I'll spend just a couple of minutes skating through these various choices just to refresh you and, and so that you can be on the same page in terms of why the draft policy that we're presenting tonight has been written the way it has been. The first question for a contribution policy to answer is, how will costs be allocated over an employee's working lifetime? And there are several different, they are called funding methods or cost methods, that allocate the costs over an employee's working lifetime. And the predominant methods are called entry-age normal and projected unit credit. And what we found when we were looking at long-range projections for your pension plans is that there's really not a lot of difference between them in terms of the numbers, the contribution that results. So the, the choice in, in this, in that sense is sort of, why do you care kind of choice? Because you'll get about the same kinds of numbers either way. Entry-age normal is what I recommend. Entry-age normal is the method used by about 80 percent of large public pension plans. Entry-age normal is also the method that you will be required to use to calculate liability to put in the city's financial statements when GASB 67 and 68, the new, new pension reporting changes come online at fiscal year-end 2014 and beyond. So you'll have to calculate the plan's liability using entry-age normal for financial reporting purposes. You may as well, therefore, I think it makes sense, to use entry-age normal for purposes of calculating a contribution. This is, though, sort of an easy choice, because really the numbers aren't going to vary all that much regardless of which choice you make. Much more important, though, is the second bullet. What's your goal? How well-funded do you want the plan to be when you get there? And the getting there is a 30-year time horizon, but are you aiming to become 90 percent funded or 100 percent funded? The statutory minimum contribution is aimed at 90 percent. The state of Illinois funds towards 90 percent. The state of Illinois is, is having some, let's say, difficulties with the SEC, in part because of that 90 percent target. I'd submit to you, I, I know you've heard me use before the mortgage metaphor, amortizing, paying off the pension plan's unfunded liability is a lot like having a mortgage on your house, in this case, a 30-year mortgage. Well, no one wants to get to the end of a 30-year mortgage and only own 90 percent of your house. The goal is, when you've paid off the mortgage, to own 100 percent of the house. And so if we apply that same metaphor here to pension plans, the objective is to become 100 percent funded, not to get to the end of this process and still have 10 percent of the benefits not be funded. That's not fulfilling the intergenerational taxpayer equity requirement by only aiming to be 90 percent funded. So the draft policy is that you will aim for being 100 percent funded. The next bullet is, how do you structure those amortization payments, those mortgage payments, if you will? And there are two ways you can do that. Level dollar amounts work exactly like a mortgage, same dollar amount of contribution in year one and year 30. Level percent amortization has the amortization payments growing over time. So as a dollar amount, they're bigger and bigger dollar amounts, but remember that over time, everything gets bigger as a dollar amount, you know? A loaf of bread gets, gets more expensive. The only thing that's coming down in, in, in price are the cost of computers and high-tech stuff, but, you know, a gallon of gas is going to be, you know, multiples of what it is now. We won't, we won't be worried about $4 a gallon, we'll, we'll start worrying when it hits 20, but that will be the normal. So similarly, a level percent amortization has growing dollar amounts, but those dollar amounts will be growing along with everything else in the city's budget, your compensation costs, your health care costs. So level percent amortization will be more predictable in a relative sense than level dollar amounts. Level percent amortization is the recommended approach by the Council of Consulting Actuaries, which is putting its finishing touches on a, a guidance document concerning contribution policies. It is used by majority of public pension plans as a funding method. Next up, conservative assumptions or aggressive assumptions? From an actuary's point of view, translation in conservative means it costs you more money. We'll, we'll have lower expectations about future investment returns, in particular. We'll assume people live a long time. Aggressive assumptions means we'll expect our investments will earn more, pay for more of the benefits, so we'll have to contribute fewer benefits. Conservatism, of course, that's my nature, my training. Conservative, in this context, the biggest assumption to think about is the interest rate assumption. What do you expect long-term the pension plan's investments will earn? The Department of Insurance did an experience study, and their expert opinion was that the appropriate interest rate assumption is six and three-quarters percent. Your current pension actuaries using seven and a half percent. The draft funding policy uses seven. It's a moderate assumption, it is a reasonable assumption, it is an assumption that you should keep your eye on and every now and then reexamine, and if necessary, adjust it. Right now, and for the past 10 or 15 years now, expert opinion about future investment returns has been sliding. People are gloomy right now about future investment returns. I don't know if that gloominess will persist. It may get worse. So the interest rate assumption is something to monitor and periodically adjust as necessary. Now, if we did all of those recommendations, entry-age normal, funding towards 100 percent, level percent amortization, 7 percent interest rate assumption, that would all mean a significant increase over what the city has been contributing. And a significant increase in any, any line item in your budget is difficult to deal with. So part of what is being proposed is that you adopt a transition strategy. So if you can imagine your contribution level is here and you are aiming for here, rather than making that jump all in one year, we'll have a three- or four-year transition strategy where the city's contribution each year will climb up until you reach the level dictated by the contribution policy as a way to make it manageable. So, the draft funding policy, to, to repeat a little bit, the funding method will use entry-age normal. The goal will be to be 100 percent funded by 2041, that's a 30-year period from a couple of years ago. You use level percent amortization, where the payments grow by 4 percent a year. You use a 7 percent interest rate, and have a phase-in, $750,000 per plan, annual increases. The phase-in actually works out to four years of phase-in for the fire plan and five years for the police plan. You know, if we chose some, you know, $750,000, obviously, is a big round number, and we could probably dial in a little more specifically to get four years for both plans or five years for both plans. But the idea is you'll make significant increases over the next four or five years until your contribution level gets from here, where it is, to where you want it to be. We've done some long-range projections to...
If I may interrupt just a little bit, I wonder if you can try to get to the, the chase. I'm very sorry, but you've actually already utilized more than five minutes of the total presentation time, and we do want to have plenty of time for discussion amongst the council members. I'm sorry.
Sure. I think the key point here, looking at the blue line, which is if you continue to pay the statutory minimum contribution, you'll see what happens to the blue towards the end of the period. The contributions are climbing sharply, let's say, steeply, astronomically, maybe, and that is avoided on the funding policy basis, which are the red lines. You'll see that both of them have a sharp drop-off once you get to 2041. You've reached the goal, whether the goal is 90 percent funded with the statutory minimum or 100 percent funded with the draft funding policy. And the funded ratio, you can see with the funding policy basis, you get to be 100 percent funded, and with the blue, with the statutory policy, you reach the goal of the statutory minimum, which is to be 90 percent funded. Plain and simple. I don't expect anyone to be able to read any of these numbers, but we have included all of the numbers. Now, keep in mind, when we're doing a 30-year projection, that, you know, if there's anything we know about these numbers, it's that, that they are not going to come true. It is just simply impossible to, to do a 30-year projection with any kind of long-term accuracy, but this is illustrative of the probable pattern that the numbers will take. We know that there will be bumps and dips in the road, but this is to illustrate the, the relative differences between these two approaches to funding the plan.
Okay.
And they have gotten to the end.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Let's go ahead and maybe Patty, if you want to bring up these, these two spreadsheets, because this gets at the context of the numbers.
Can I ask one question? Did, did the council get a copy of this PowerPoint presentation?
Yes. I came out in the addendum, I think, on Friday.
Okay. I had it, and Alderman Schmidt didn't have it.
Yeah. Yeah.
And I have paper copies as well, if you'd like them.
Thank you.
As Patty's coming up, well, we won't dwell on the policy. What you have is a draft. I would recommend that only if the council in the next month or two is ready to adopt a policy, we adopt it by ordinance. I think that's the only way to kind of make that, you know, the city law, just like several other principles or policies related to the budget. So even though it's not in ordinance format now, that's how I will have that prepared and brought back to the council. At this point, Patty, do you, if you just want to shift to these two, let's quickly look at the minimum, state minimum, and then keep up there for discussion purposes, the phase-in and that second. So just make a few comments on both, and we'll be nearing the end of our presentation.
Please, on the one that entitled Scenario 1, which you can see here, and sorry if I'm making you dizzy, is basically the, the state minimum, and over time, over that period we just discussed, it will cost the city about $534 million in contributions until, the funding year is 2041, but the budget year is 2043. And as you'll see on the next page, the proposed funding policy, the city will pay $465,780,000, and it's about a $70 million savings over time. So if you look at the spreadsheet in the far-right column, you can see that the annual increase in the short term is a little painful. What we're doing is, we're, we're having, we're putting more dollars into the fund now, based on a well-researched and contemplated policy, and as we phase in, we certainly wouldn't want to go up to $7 million and $6 million in one year, we've tried to phase that in equally amongst both plans, and then after that, you can see it's kind of maintenance because it's a percent-of-pay plan. Everything goes up, as Becky said, and certainly this would follow that. As you get to the end, you can see again, if we adopted this, we'd have an incredible amount of savings over the long term, and these numbers would be refined each year in those contributions number, numbers by the actuary evaluation. So if assets do better and different things happen, those numbers could work out, they could change. But these are, again, these just give you a playing field. If we were to adopt the policy, we'd be adding $1.5 million to the pension annually for one, two, three years, then it would go to 1.1 million, down to 700,000, and then so on. Now, that's a cumulative number, so in year two, that's $3 million over our current base. So I just want to point that out, and...
Just to, to go back to that, if I, if I, just to, again, make sure that everyone in the audience is clear, too. If we adopt this policy, we need a million and a half more in the next year on top of what we already have. We're going to need a million and a half, so three million more in year two above where we currently are, and then four and a half million more in year three, and then we're pretty close to plateau. It goes down a little bit, but we, we essentially need about 6 million more than we're currently putting in to get to the plateau, as our distinguished consultant has told us.
We'll go from 6 million to about 12 million over a four- or five-year period as opposed to adopting in one, one year.
But once we're there, much of the rest of this is probably, is noise in, in budgetary data. I mean, we can, that's not something that...
And if you think about that graph, it kind of goes up and then levels off over the long term, which is good for so many reasons, as Becky pointed out.
So the toughest bullet biting is over the next four years or so.
It is.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I could, just a couple of quick comments. As you know, one of the alternatives is to use, well, the big question is how to fund it. Property tax, and a property tax increase is one way, but not the only way. Also shared with you, another way is to, and I would recommend that we continue to have the, the property tax account be the one that actually makes the payment to the fire and the police pension plan, as they do currently. However, another alternative is to raise some other form of general fund revenue, such as the utility tax. By doing that, what we could do is we would swap out and take some of the property tax, an equal amount, that has been going to say, police, fire, parks, we'd pull that out, you know, and we would replace that with an increasing share of pension payments, so that, again, if, if the principle or the objective is to keep the property tax levy, that can be done as well, but you'd have to either raise some additional revenue in the general fund, you'd have to make cuts equal to the one and a half, 3 million, four and a half, or some combination. But once again, I, I think it makes it cleaner long-term is to have at least the property tax be the final... tax be the final conduit through which the pension payments is made. I think it was a year or two ago, we shared with you how some other cities, I remember Springfield, almost their entire property tax levy goes to pensions and pensions only. There are some cities that have continued, you know, that has been their policy position. So with that, Mayor, I think we're ready to turn it back to you and the council and answer questions and listen to the discussion and direction.
Normally, I would ask who would like to weigh in, but I won't at this point since we've got, we're going to try to allocate, you know, at this point, 35 minutes to 40 minutes for discussion. So I think Alderman Sterns, you're about ready to press the button. I will start with you.
Thank you. Patty, the shortfall in police and fire is now what? The unfunded liability is 130 million, or can you give us that number real quick or a close number?
The last updated numbers we have for everything is the 2012 audit. We're finalizing the 13 audit, but it's close to, with the three pensions, it's close to 100, it's close to, yeah, 118 million.
So including IMRF? Or what's the third?
Yes, IMRF also has an unfunded piece, yes.
Okay. Hell, I'm sorry.
So about 35 to 37 million per the police and fire pension each.
They're each, they're, okay, I'm sorry. Let me go at this one more time really clearly. So take police, fire, and I guess you want to include, I'd rather just include those two right now for clarity. Do you know what the unfunded liability is?
The unfunded liability is about 70 million at last measured at April of 2012. I'm sorry, 90 million.
90 million.
90, okay.
For police and fire.
That's okay.
Police and fire only.
Police and fire, yes.
And just to clarify, IMRF is currently at about 80% funded?
It's 80% funded, yes.
Currently?
Yes.
And we're not talking at all about the other post-employment benefits. I mean, we're not, no. And yet, will we be able to see the numbers for those, the OPEB, you know?
Yes, we'll be presenting those when we present the audit, which will be published on October 31st.
Okay.
So we'll be coming back to you shortly.
Okay. I think it would be helpful to get, you know, the entire total picture of pensions and where we're at. And I also wanted to ask you, so looking at the five-year plan you've mentioned, which to me is a pretty, you know, aggressive approach to increasing the funding, can you show us or tell us how to figure out, number-wise, where that shortfall would be, how much it would fall in, say, the five years where we do this incremental funding? I mean, I'm looking at the unfunded liability and wondering how this plan is going to directly affect that in terms of the actual numbers.
On the gray sheet on that last page. Okay. Becky has it on her presentation.
Let me just show you. And on that last page. I didn't include it here, but I do have, if you're with me, I can pull that up.
Well, I mean, I can, you can send it to me, or I can pick it up, or you can put it in my box if you'd like. I don't mean to slow things down here.
Okay. We, is it, are we talking about a couple seconds or, okay?
At her finding the right spreadsheet, I asked a question.
Yes, in the meantime, Alderman Schmidt, I'm sorry.
I want to follow up on your point, Mayor, about the building of the 1.5, 3 million, 4.5, et cetera, and link that into the utility tax, David. How do those mesh up in terms of how much money might potentially come in with an increase in the utility tax and how that maps out to that four-to-five-year increase?
First, we're doing some extensive research to make sure we can bring you the, you know, detailed numbers on that because there is, like telecommunications has a different rate, electric has a different rate. But anyway, approximately, approximately, if we were to take those various utility taxes to the max or similar to be on par with normal in many of the other Illinois cities, we would raise about an additional $4 million. Now, one option is to, you know, gradually increase utility tax so that next year, you know, a small increase would give us about a million and a half. And then the second year, it'd give us 3 million. But early projections are it probably would not be enough to get the full 6 million. As you might recall, we're going from six to a little over 12, but it would come up with quite a bit. Plus, things will change year after year, growth, revenue projections, receipts, weather conditions, et cetera. So but approximately 4 million, give or take, you know, maybe a half million. That's what we're, we should have ready, you know, sometime in the very near future.
If it were to be the full amount that would bring us up to par with other communities, you're saying?
Yes, to kind of hit the so-called either statutory cap or what otherwise is allowed by state law.
And then what do we do internally to more or less assure that there, the swapping out of funds between a utility tax and our property tax would actually happen? I guess I'm asking in a roundabout way.
Yes.
How do we know that the utility tax for the foreseeable future, a long-term foreseeable future, is actually going to go to what we intended to go to?
Two ways. One, come December, when you adopt the 2013 property tax levy for fiscal year 2015, that'll be the first time you would show that the pensions payment would go up by a million and a half in the tax levy. And let's say we keep the levy level or flat, you'll see those go up, but general fund expenditures from the tax levy going down. And then when you adopt the, and then, and it could be at the same time, you would be adopting ordinances to increase utility tax rate by an equal amount, something to give us that 1.5 million. Yes, in a roundabout way, yes.
Would we, and I guess to follow that up, so we would be able, in the ordinance as you're describing it, make sure that this is earmarked for pensions? And as you say, it's in the next, this bump, this tough time that we're going to get, it mostly gets us through it, but not quite, we may need, we're still going to need to, I mean, depending on what happens with, if we grow a little bit, it might get us through it.
Right.
Close. I'm sorry.
I just want to add the final caveat. As you all know, ordinances can always be changed by a future council. So this council can start that, make that part of the city code and the city law, but, you know, I think by adopting the policy, adopting the levy, et cetera, et cetera, you know, it would take, yes.
That's the council, excuse me, Alderman Fazini.
To begin, I think I would say that the percentage of pay is something that the Finance Committee agreed to for two reasons. The first one was we have a growing population and not many cities in the state of Illinois can say that. So we'll have more people paying as we go. And as you said, Becky, it gets cheaper. So why not pay more as you go when you have more people paying and it gets cheaper? So that makes perfect sense. The 7% might sound a little aggressive, but I think our bond rating agency, I believe Fitch uses 7%. So it's in the ballpark and it is something that we watch each time. The concept of using a bond issue to get caught up quickly, we discussed that at Finance on two different occasions, that could work. We could take 2 million, 3 million, 4 million, whatever increase, and the utility tax, dedicate that to pensions and issue bonds for, I don't know, if we had 4 million, we could probably issue bonds for $30 million. We'd get caught up real quick. And that's another option. We don't have to go with just pay as you go. We can do a bond issue over 30 years because this whole plan is over 30 years. So why not pay it back over 30 years and use dollars today to get caught up much more quickly? Becky, I'd like your comments on using a bond issued. Has anybody done that?
There are pension obligation bonds, and they're taxable municipal bonds, so it's if you're paying a higher rate than a normal general obligation bond. The, you are trading a soft obligation, which is contributing to the pension plan to improve how well-funded it is, for a hard obligation, which is the obligation to pay debt service. In the long run, you may not be appreciably different, you know, in tackling it one way or the other. But it is, of course, that has been followed by other communities. Now, it's somewhat fallen into disfavor because the, it all depends on the timing of when you sell those bonds and put that money into the pension funds. And if you do that just before the dot-com bubble bursts, for instance, which happened, there were quite a lot of pension obligation bonds sold in the late 90s to get plans to be fully funded. And some of those communities then ended up having lost a great deal of the investments in the market, having, again, a poorly-funded pension plan and the debt service on top of it. And in fact, your finance directors, a former community of hers went through exactly that and now have issued or are about to issue another set of pension obligation bonds on top of the first one. So they're trying it again, and I sincerely wish, hope that it proves that better.
In terms of that, isn't, I would think also there might be a public reaction to borrowing money to pay for your pensions rather than doing it?
Well, I did hear it once likened to, you know, to the litmus test for whether you really individually thought this was a good idea, was would any of you be willing to mortgage your house, take a home equity loan, take all the equity out of your house and invest it in the stock market?
In hopes that you'll pay off the mortgage.
Right, right. So it is, it is a, you are taking money and investing it, and therefore it is subject to risk.
Right.
And that is, some, there are communities who think that's an acceptable risk and there are communities who think it is not. And I can't guide you on how you feel about risk. I can show you what the numbers look like. There's not all that much spread, though. Interest rates have been rising and the most recent numbers I've been seeing are taxable municipal bonds in, say, a 5% range. So if you're investing, you said yourself, I'll take your word, 7% is, I don't think you said aggressive, but it's...
Moderate.
It's moderate. Well, so if we were being conservative and looking at the long-term investment returns of the police and fire pension plans with the limitations that they have statutorily on how much can be invested in equities, you know, conservatively, maybe we should be thinking long-term at something below 7%, maybe six and a half. So if you're selling bonds that you've got to pay five on and you can turn around and invest them at six and a half, well, maybe over 30 years, you'll come out ahead by that one and a half margin, but it's not a really big margin. It's not like if you could sell those bonds at three and invest at eight, where you've got a huge arbitrage opportunity. You've got a small arbitrage opportunity and a lot of risk that goes along with it.
Well, thank you. Anything else? I just want everyone to understand it.
Mayor, I do have the unfunded accrued liability numbers on screen. If you'd like to return to Alderman Sterns' question.
Follow up with Alderman Sterns' point. And then Alderman Sterns, you get the floor now.
Excuse me. What I have up here are the police numbers, and I know the side screens are very small, but on the back screen here, here's the unfunded accrued liability. We're starting with the most recent information that I have available, which is May 1st, 2012. So this is obviously a little bit out of date. You'll see that the unfunded accrued liability actually grows as a dollar amount for several years. That's a natural outcome of level percent amortization. In the early years, the amortization payments are not enough to keep pace with interest on the unfunded liability. So the unfunded liability grows as a dollar amount until the amortization payments get high enough, and then you can see that the unfunded accrued liability drops and eventually gets down to zero. The funded ratio always rises, but very slowly in the early years, and then it starts picking up. The fire numbers are, follow a similar pattern. There's, you know, obviously slightly different numbers. The fire plan is not quite as well-funded as the police plan, and the unfunded accrued liability climbs for a bunch of years and then at that point starts, it reaches a tipping point and the unfunded liability goes down.
Do you have follow-up questions, Alderman Sterns?
No, thank you. It's a little hard to see that unfunded liability actually rise. What would it take to start, you know, sort of working on that unfunded liability sooner? I mean, what?
More money.
A lot more money, I would assume.
If you had level dollar amortization, the unfunded accrued liability would start, would go down every year. I mean, and this is all, of course, we know there will be bumps in the road, but this is just in theory, the unfunded accrued liability would always decline if you...
And the level funded, is that an option you've given, is that in here in terms of a scenario, the level funded?
The level dollar amortization is a scenario we looked at. In fact, I could plug it in right now if you, sorry, I'm pressing the wrong buttons here. If I change, this is the amortization growth rate at 4%. And if you look at the, let me bring us down to the contribution amounts here, the contributions are here. If I plug in level dollar, you can see that the contributions are much, much higher. Instead of our aiming for a $6 million kind of level, we're aiming for an $8 million amount for this plan. So it's significantly increasing the hurdle. It does because you're putting in more dollars sooner. It means you'll be putting in fewer dollars later, and it means you're getting better funded sooner. So in the abstract, in the ideal world, I'd be all for it. In the practical world, it's such a huge jump between where you are now and where that would put you that it doesn't seem doable.
And that doesn't totally take into consideration inflation anyway, that things are going to go up, costs are going to go up.
Right.
That's true, no matter what.
Right, right.
Thank you.
And let's see, Alderman Fruen, and then Alderman Sage in Millinwambe.
Thank you. Several questions. I'm just going to ask one at this time to make sure everybody's got some chance here, but I wanted to ask it in conjunction with the bonds. Does it make any sense at all to intertwine our payments and our method to solve this problem with our existing bond-debt schedule?
Can I first, let me throw this out, and I go back to the street resurfacing bond. We, as staff, we are trying to quickly put together a 20-year listing of some of these very critical capital improvements that are needed, sanitary sewers, storm drain, facility needs, you know, fire station remodeling, et cetera. I anticipate that we'll be coming back and recommending we have discussion of a future bond issue for some of these other critical infrastructure. That too can be wrapped around a lot of this future, you know, debt service schedule and how within 10 years we'll pay off 50%. So I think that's one thing to keep in mind, you know. The other piece of this big picture of the capital improvement needs, you know, should be coming to you in a, hopefully, a good package here within the next couple of months. So don't lose sight of that. But, you know, a pension bond can also be wrapped around this alone, but, you know, that could also be on top of, you know, further borrowing for infrastructure. And at some point in time, I think the more the council can see the whole picture, the better for you to make those critical priorities.
Alderman Fruen?
Mayor, that's the only question I'll ask at this time, but I think what David said is what we've talked about when we issued the $10 million straight bond, is that we need to see as big a picture as we can because I can't really provide an opinion or a thought on one piece at a time. So I'd like to know the intertwining of the bond, and I've asked before, and I think it's being researched, is information on the utility tax. So I think a lot of this has to come together before I sit here and say, here's what I like and here's what I would recommend.
Can I just add one comment, Mayor? To your point, in terms of the pension bond, once we have those proceeds, I'm not sure that we as a city have the authority to invest those. The pension boards do the investments, so that's another caveat. You know, we may not have the autonomy to pick the investments that we would be potentially using. I'm not sure, but I just wanted to put that out there so I know the pension boards do invest in pension assets.
Thank you. Alderman Sage, and then Millinwambe Inlauer.
And maybe follow up a little bit, Jim, on your point in that we still sit here talking hypothetically, right? We're still not sure exactly what we're going to do. So let me talk in terms a little bit more of maybe from a values or principles standpoint. So let me talk in terms a little bit more of maybe from a values or principles standpoint in terms of directing our plan or our policy going forward. First of all, I'm reminded again of, again, why I was never a fan of the previous city manager, okay? It's a little bit like cleaning up after the circus parade has come through town, right? The elephants have come through and now the parade route has to be cleaned up, right? And so that's kind of what we're doing here metaphorically. As I've said up here the last six years, right, I've seen any number of things, I just jotted some things down here. We had a conversation about the garbage fee where the fee didn't get raised for a number of years, and then it was like $5 and then seven, and then we bumped it. We had a little bit of this conversation around liquor license a few weeks ago, too. And I think if memory serves me right, that may have even been part of the conversation around water rates and sewer rates. And so one of the things that, you know, I apologize, makes me crazy through the years is somehow this need to try and get whole all at once or in some accelerated expedited manner. And I know that's got to make our residents crazy, too, right? So is there a way, I mean, help me understand, I guess what I'm looking for in a plan is if, unless this four-year or five-year, you know, shock and awe approach here that we're talking about with a million and a half per year, I mean, unless there's something magical about that, I'm interested in seeing something that is a much more level, manageable, slower climb that gets us, I mean, I'm not suggesting I want to kick the can down the road because I think those days are past. But something that is much more measured and perhaps a little bit more constant over time so that we don't, you know, again, kind of create shock for the taxpayers. So from a principles or a value standpoint, that's a little bit more what I'm interested in rather than specifically talking about a percentage tax or a bond or something like that. I'd rather see some options around that that allows us to not surprise folks next year with, you know, a lot of new taxes if possible.
I think Alderman, Milowamboy, and then Alderman Lauer.
Sure. Well, just have a simple question for now. How are we going to make the contribution payments? Are we going to make them annually or quarterly? Because I've seen other suggestions that, you know, quarterly might be able to take advantage of compound interest.
I think it depends on how you fund them. If you fund them with property tax, you would want to send them in twice a year when we do the collections on the property tax. My model would be get it into the pension funds as early as possible so they can begin to earn that interest as early as possible and not hold on to it. If we were funding it from some other source, I would try to match it with that. Utility tax came in regularly, then every month, or maybe even ahead, or.
Anything else? Alderman.
Okay, well, I've got a little bit different perspective than most here, I have to assume. I come right back to the fact that we need to reprioritize. I think we need to take responsibility for this. It has not happened in the past. I'm much more in favor of a level dollar amortization and taking a more aggressive approach at trying to pay this down faster. However, I'm not willing to sit and talk about a tax until we reprioritize and figure out exactly what our essential services really are and how we meet those first. And then when we start to talk about some of these other quality of life issues, such as all these little things like playground equipment, new million-dollar parks, and the grove, for instance, that we just got stuck with. Now, we didn't know that and we had to pay for it. We didn't have a choice, but we will have choices in the future on many of these things. And I really think this is a bill that we have promised. You and I didn't maybe do it. It happened in decades past possibly, but it's something that we have to face, it's something that we have to do, we have to pay it down. And then from there, we need to reprioritize and figure out exactly what our essentials are. And then we can make a real judgment call in terms of what essential things are going to get paid for and what quality of life issues we're willing to ask the taxpayer to pay for in additional taxation. I'm not willing, in Ward 1, to commit to any type of tax. We are hurting. We have many, many citizens that still have not recovered or even partially recovered from our recession. And so until we see some real improvement there, I'm not going to stand on that. And I think we really have to be very, very careful about where that balance lies because I don't think we can afford a large-scale issue with mortgage foreclosures, loss of automobiles, and people ending up on assistance. So again, we need to look at the big picture first. Thanks.
Okay. Other comments? Well, I think that what we, at this point, since we're getting toward the end, but I will turn it over to City Manager David Hales, and then what I'm going to ask us to be, I'm going to start at one end and go to the other, is where are we now in terms of direction that we give to our city manager? Do we want, as perhaps Alderman Sage had suggested, something that's a little more gradual, a little less shock to the system? Do we want something that's super aggressive? But, you know, again, with all due respect, there's certainly all kinds of things that we're stuck with, right? As Alderman Lauer suggested, but we're not going to be able to make millions of dollars in reprioritizing in the next few weeks or the next couple of months. And then that's the situation that we face right now. And for our staff, at the very least, they, for them to be the most productive, what do they bring back to us? Or, and so I think that's what you were trying to find out, guidance from us, your elected officials, as to where we're coming from. And clearly, you're hearing some contrary voices, so that's why I'm going to go around and ask people, you know, in about 30 seconds or less, you know, where are you coming from? David?
Just a couple of quick comments. I do want to make reference to other critical factors that have an impact on these future projections. Keep in mind, while the city of Wilmington pays the bill, the General Assembly sets the benefit level. And what we have seen over time is the General Assembly has been swayed, has been levied to create and to spike the benefits for police and firefighters because they haven't had to pay the bill. Another term, or another thing you've got to keep in mind is there's also employee participation. One thing we're hearing at the state level is this concept of shared sacrifice. Either the employee nor the employer, you know, in our case, is at fault here. General Assembly sets these rules. You know, to me, that's got to be a part of the future discussion in this state is the financial sustainability of these defined benefit programs. So keep in mind, you know, we're all waiting to see how does the state solve their pension crisis, and they're even more at fault, they're missing so many of these annual payments. But, you know, we're part of the, you know, league of Illinois cities, and sooner or later, I think we've got to take a stronger role in Springfield and make sure that they don't do anything more to harm, you know, the future liability we have, don't spike benefits like they've done in the past, and that hopefully we can see some changes made in state law that it doesn't happen again when people, this doesn't become front burner, you know, and a main topic of discussion because they control, you know, how much is going to have to be paid if they adjust those or if they insist on some shared sacrifice, both employee and employer as well. And that has not been taken into account in these projections. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And again, what I would like is, I think the staff would be most, or best served if we can hit on two things. One is, do we want a more aggressive payment schedule or a more, you know, amortized, the easier payment schedule? And the second is, what are our thoughts on how to pay for it? And I know some of you have said you want more information, and that's fair, but if we, if you could give our staff a little bit of recommendation or guidance, they have proposed a property tax levy for one particular option, right? If that you favor that, if you would make that explicit, if you don't favor any tax increase at all, then we'd certainly appreciate how we can move forward and whether or not you favor the utility tax increase. Again, the utility, just to clarify, the utility tax, mostly we're at about 2.5%. Normal's at 5. Most of our communities around us are at 5. And presumably, it's one of those taxes that it's not new, we'd be changing this to the level of normal. We're not going to be at a strategic economic disadvantage because we have a higher level taxation than normal or any of our other surrounding communities. And I think those are just some of the clarifications of that. City Manager, did you have any other? Okay. All right. Yeah, please, please. First of all, the, how aggressive do we want to be in payment? I think as you had suggested, Alderman Sage, maybe a little more of a gentle slope rather than the big slope. Or as I think, if it's fair to say, Alderman Lauer and Alderman Sterns had suggested, a much more aggressive approach than what's presented here or what's something, some version was presented here. So weigh in on that. And then in terms of funding, how do we pay for it? What are some suggestions or feedback you can give to staff so that they can give us options on November 12th or, you know, subsequent meeting for us to consider to say, okay, these are the pieces here, these are the pieces here? Does that make sense? Okay, thanks. I'm going to, Alderman Fruen, I'm sorry, I'm going to start with you.
Can I break the rule real quickly?
We're pretty, we're pretty loose here with that, but we do want to move on.
I'll make it very quick because I had several questions earlier, and I think we still need to address this utility thing because I don't think we should develop the attitude that since other surrounding communities have a certain percentage that we can be like them. And I think I've asked the question about are there communities that might be tax exempt, have some institutions that are tax exempt, et cetera. So I think there's differences in our communities. So I think that's a real critical piece of this thing. Okay, back to the rules. How aggressive do we want to be? I think of, over all the period of time, all the scenarios that have been presented to us, I think we have enough scenarios. I don't think we need another, another method. I think we've got them. But, so I'm not asking for anything else there. I think the real question is, and I think we've heard it from our residents, is what, the real question is how much, what is the amount that we want to fund? A dollar amount year one, year two, year three, year four? I think we need a projection. Then we can figure out the best way to select a method. I think, in my opinion, the amount has to come before the method.
Well, I think the method dictates the amount, right?
They are intertwined. I guess I'm saying that. I don't know, I guess it goes back to your question of how aggressive do we want to be, right?
Right.
I just ask her to change the screen back to show specifically that, you know, the recommended funding level and dollars needed. Yes, the one that corresponds. So I, I think that's what, you know, that chart shows.
I guess I'm first up here and I don't want to be evasive, but my question is, how does this intertwine with other things that we are going to be considering with regard to streets, water, sewer, all the other things we have on our plate right now? Are we taking this as an isolated study right now and we're only making a decision?
At my understanding of what staff has prepared, I think, is that these are the additional amounts in addition to what we currently are paying, that we are going to have to pay. 1.5 million, 1.5 million, 1.5 million, you know, as we go forward. And what is the revenue source for that? And I suppose you can, it could very well be that we, you know, kick the can for another year to develop a policy till we get everything on the table, but I think, at least from what I understand, we're saying, at this point, we know we need to deal with pensions. This is one possibility. And one of the possibilities was raising the property tax. Another possibility that we've talked about is raising utility tax. So anyway, City Manager David Hales.
Let me just clarify, too. Even if you don't adopt this pension funding policy and we just go with the state minimum, we anticipate at least something around $1.5 million increase in the property, in the property tax levy that the council will be faced with in November. So if you just look at next year alone, we're going to be 1.5 billion increase to make minimum contributions, or that could be 1.5 million as part of a pension policy that would, you know, continue those increases as shown here. So I just want to make sure, the property tax levy for December does have a built-in minimum increase, or it will have to have an extra 1.5 million as we're being told currently by the state.
Thank you. Okay, we'll ask the council then to be a little more, we've already exceeded our time and we have other things, but Jim, anything else you want to add?
No.
Okay. Alderman Sini?
I'm with Alderman Sage. I'd like to be a little less aggressive, and the way to do that, I believe, is to have the policy 90% funding. I think right now, if we were 90% funded, everybody in this room would be real happy. So I don't know why we wouldn't be happy later at 90%. I also don't think it would affect our bond rating adversely, even though it will affect the state's bond rating adversely because it's in terrible financial shape. We're in excellent financial shape, and I don't think the bond rating agencies would look down upon us at 90%. That being the case, I don't favor any increase in the property tax, but I do think we can either do a local motor fuel tax that'd give us 1.4 million or a utility tax increase that can get us anywhere from 1.5 to 4 million, and that one of those is going to have to happen or we're not going to be able to fund our pensions.
Alderman Black?
Thank you. I am in favor of being moderately aggressive, if that is a punt, I don't know, but at least acknowledging the fact that we have other things that we need to worry about, but this is also a critical component. So I'd like to see us be serious and put serious money towards it. In terms of, you know, I think that the percent is the better option, you know, having gone through the Finance Committee, we talked about that and why there's a virtue to that. I'm with the 90% as the funding level. And in terms of how we go about it, I'd like to see us get very creative with, we mentioned motor fuel tax, we talked about the utility tax, maybe get real creative with the budget in terms of how we're able to remove some money around so we can maybe take advantage of some of our investments, get some of that revenue back before we start talking about property tax increases.
Alderman Schmidt?
I am okay with the proposals that we heard tonight and the recommendations that we heard this evening. I wish we could be more aggressive. I don't think we're financially able to be right now. And like Alderman Fruen and probably others, I have a lot of concerns about other funding needs that are coming along with capital improvement projects with potential garbage rate increases, water increases. We can find a lot of ways to reach into everybody's pocket, and I, and I think we need, as a council, to understand what that 100% is of what we're, where we're growing and how we're going to pay for that. So isolating this makes me nervous, but to the extent that we're having this conversation tonight, the utility tax and that modest bump over a few years is more palatable than some of the other things I've heard.
Alderman. McCade.
No, it's okay. No problem. I support what I see in front of us. I think it's reasonable. I think it's, you know, the very first thing we heard tonight is that this is a long-term problem. It needs a long-term solution. I think, you know, that's something that we hear echoed in some of the other situations we're dealing with as well. I definitely think we should begin this year. I do not support an increase in property taxes, so I would be interested in considering the utility tax and/or, you know, I'm supportive, looking for other funds in the general fund budget to cover this reasonable increase. I appreciate the comment about prioritizing. I've seen a council that has, and a staff, let me be really clear about that. I have seen a council and a staff that has prioritized every year through our budget process since I've come on this council. In fact, there was an article in the Panograph three days ago about the number of city vehicles going home with employees has decreased two-thirds from the level that it was at a couple of years ago. And so when we talk about prioritizing, I think what comes to me is that I see us continually doing that. I do think we have our priorities straight in terms of what, you know, I think it's very, we're very committed to public safety. Look at with infrastructure. We've every year increased the funding of street repairs and road repairs, and again, we've taken an approach that's reasonable. We haven't been able to do the huge increase that we. We haven't been able to do the huge increase that we, we would like to do, but we've been able to kind of bring that up over time. And to me, I see something similar with this. We've all identified that this needs to be corrected, but a reasonable long-term approach, to me, seems to be what our, our citizens want. And I, I think we can go into the budget process with prioritization as, as a priority. There's no better way to say that. But I think, you know, I really do think all of us to a person are interested in continuing to do that, but it just, you know, I'm struck by always an impatience to the things, the fact that these things take more time than we wish they did. But they do work over time, I think, and I, you know, I just want us to think about that as we go through this. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Sterns?
Well, I'd like to see the number, the 130 million dollar number, I'd like to see that go down. And I, I understand this, this whole thing about, you know, rapid increases in, in needs and all that. And yet, if other councils over the last many years had, had been aggressive, if they had thought, you know, we have, we have to do more and go further than what, you know, is the sort of the nice level, ever so gentle increase in funding these things, we wouldn't, we would not be in this position that we are. And, and we are in a very serious position. Fitch has told us that. It's not, it's not my idea. They've said our, our funding levels are inadequate, and they kept our rating at double A plus. Now, I particularly happen to believe that we should have a much higher bond rating, as high as we can possibly have. Normal's got a higher one, I think we should have a higher one, and I think we could. And if we did, I think that our, the cost of borrowing, all of our costs would go down, and everything would be beneficial to us as a city. Now, Fitch has told us, fund those pensions a lot better, and that's how you'll get a more favorable rating. So it's not my idea. In fact, that's why I voted against the last budget, because I said we're not really increasing our funding of the pensions, and our, also our capital needs. Now, I realize my time is up, but I will say on, on taxation, I don't think we always, as a council, and in the financial position that most of us are in, understand what a fixed income is. I don't think we understand what an elderly person in this city who calls me and says, my water bills have tripled. Yes, they have, and so have your garbage fees, and that's a tax. So I don't think we're empathizing and, and sensitive to the least among us in what they can and cannot afford, and utility taxes are going to hit them hard. Not, not us. We won't even feel it, but it will hit them, and I think we need to think about that as a council. And finally, in closing, the other thing, we have not heard one bit about serious looks at spending cut opportunities, at opportunities to economize. We haven't heard anything about that. Well, do you want a utility tax, or do you want property taxes? Well, golly gee, do you want chocolate or vanilla? I don't want either one. I want strawberry. I want creativity, I want innovation, I wanna look at the things that we spend money on in this city. We just spent 1.2 million on parks. That frankly, they're nice, but is that where, is that really gonna take us to a higher bond rating and financial stability? Thank you.
Alderman Milowambway?
Sure, thank you. Well, I think I'm more in favor of going in a moderate direction, just because I, I think this is a, it's been a long-term problem, and we, we do need to, to take some time and feel the effects of a, of a change in policy. So I would go a little more moderately, so we know what we're getting into, especially in light of all the other needs that we might have down the line. So I think the first year, I'd like to see how this feels first. And, and I also feel like I, I do not know enough at this time. I'd like to get more information about all these other things. I mean, we talked about utility tax, we've talked about motor fuel tax as well, and I do not feel that I, I know enough at this point. So I, I'd like to see the staff present us with some options, and some have talked about cost cutting, well, but we, we don't exactly know what that means. So we, you know, I'd like to see the staff do more research on that before I'm prepared to vote.
Alderman Sage?
Well, and, and cost cutting is a nice endeavor, except we're faced with the reality of the linkage between the property tax assessment, the levy that has to be set this year, and us going through the budget process to, to the middle part of next year. And, and so, for those who are talking about, about cost cutting, you know, perhaps then, it, I guess I'm trying to understand, is, is, and maybe this is a rhetorical question, so is, is, so then, is, is the, that opinion, that not a new utility tax increase, not a property tax increase, we'll find the million and a half as we go through the budget next year? That's, that's a little bit unclear for me, as, as to how folks are mixing in the cost-cutting, you know, angle. From a funding level, I think I favor the 90%. Agree with the level percent growth rate. Again, rather than seeing a steep curve at the front end of that, of that schedule, that 30-year schedule, I'd rather see something that's more, that is more measured and more incremental, and, and I, I think, hopefully more manageable for folks. In terms of, 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 again, I'm, I'm interested, I, I have an open mind towards all the options. I mean, I don't know enough about the utility tax, I don't know enough about the bond. That was a point I was trying to make a few weeks ago when we were voting on the road bond. You know, we didn't have line of sight on all this, on all these other items. But, but I guess what I value is a, a much more measured, incremental, gradual approach towards getting, getting our, those two, those two pension funds back to 90% funded within the suggested schedule here.
Thank you. Alderman Lauer?
I've never been one to be comfortable with much of anything. I understand that. My, my big push is to try to keep people in their homes in Ward 1, and that's why I will not even consider looking at a tax until we look at reprioritizing. And I know I have full faith in, in our city manager that we can find an extra million and a half in the first year, in terms of prioritization. This is something that we have been putting off, we need to do it. Whether it's a little bit smaller, or a little bit larger than that, I don't think it really probably matters too much. I think that the taxation issue ought to be put off to a, a later time, when we do have a view, a clear view of the big picture.
Thanks. Thank you. Excuse me. Anything else that you wanna add before we move on to the library board? Thank you very much. I very much appreciate all your work, and thank you. We have some members of the library board, and the library director?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name's Bill Wetzel. I'm an attorney here in Bloomington, and I'm also the chair of the Budget and Personnel Committee of the library, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna hope you don't have a lot of questions for me, and I hope you can get closer back to on your schedule, but I do wanna make one comment, because I get a chance to, and I don't often pass up the opportunity to brag about our library. With me up here tonight is Georgia Boda, who's our director, and I tell you, you see the statistics, I think you get our minutes, you know what's going on, you see the parking lot filled over there, and the volume of materials and services that go through that building, and the services that are, are provided, and it's Georgia and her staff that do that, and, and I think we all owe them a lot, and, and some recognition of what they do. It's, it's really, it's, it's a very, very good library that we have, and I hope everybody appreciates it. Having said that, you have before you the budget that was approved by the library board at its meeting last Tuesday. Some of you are new to this process, because you're new, the, the library board is an independent entity created by statute and governed by statute, but we bring a budget to the council every year for our property tax levy, which is our source of revenue, and we show up on the tax bills. I don't think actually we're a part of the city overall levy. We, we show up as a separate issue, or a separate line item on our tax bills. But you have before you, the information about our budget is a, it's a lean budget. It's a budget that anticipates some increase in staffing salary-wise, and, and basically stops at that point. It, it's almost frozen in time, if you will, if you look at the increases, very modest. It's, it's a, a budget that does not anticipate at this instant any additional facility that we might need and do need. We have in prior years sought monies to set aside for that purpose. We, we understand there's, there are issues around that, so we haven't provided anything in our budget for that. But we would very much request that you approve this budget tonight. Georgia's here, I'm here, we have a couple of other members of our board who are here, and with that, I'm not gonna try to anticipate questions you may have. If you have them, I'll certainly try to answer them, or maybe...
Just as a clarification, this is a work session, so we're not approving anything this evening, just, just to clarify that. And just, one, one thing that I, I would add, though, Mr. Wetzel, is that in, the library board in Normal is directly elected.
Yes.
The library board in Bloomington has the same authority, as you, you might mention, and it is held accountable by the mayor and council. So I think in the future, if you're gonna ask for a tax increase, that at least the mayor and council shouldn't read about it in the paper. So just sort of politically, it would be useful for us, maybe to have a little more direct communication on this in the future. That would be my comment as mayor. Questions? Let's start out with Alderman Sage.
Just a, a couple of benchmarks, I guess, and I'm gonna, David, ask you a question here in a second. Bill, the, the total budget then proposed for, for FY15 is 5.253 million, is that correct?
Yes.
And am I understanding that right now, in your unaudited fund, that would be your emergency fund, your reserve fund, you have 3.5 million? Is that correct?
There's a figure in the packet that you folks got from city staff, and...
And, and...
Yes.
So, so put that in, in, 'cause I wanna try to, I guess, get a reference point for, for the policy the city of Bloomington has. How many months of emergency fund does that 3.5 million dollars represent on a 5.3?
Well, some of it is for capital improvements, which we've been, if you roll back a few years, there were, there was concern that there were no, there was no budget, no item for capital improvements. We had a couple of incidents where we had to come back and seek more funding, and so we were asked to and did build that fund up. There is a...
Yeah, I'm just asking for how many months of operating budget in effect do you have in your, in your unreserved fund?
I guess I'm gonna jump in here. I, I don't know that we think of it exactly like that. This is all of our fund balances all wrapped together. There's a fixed asset fund where we set aside money to replace library equipment, like, for example, we're gonna buy a new bookmobile this year, which is about a $200,000 expense. The main, the fixed asset budget is 650,404.86. There's also, as Bill mentioned, a capital fund where we have been setting aside money for capital expansion, but it doesn't mean just a, you know, a building. We're going to need to replace our heating system this year. That money will come from, from that fund. So then what's left is the maintenance and operating fund, that has 1, 1,124,390. That's the regular operating budget of the library. So that's what remains right now, and would be essentially our, our emergency fund.
And I guess, so, I, I'm not sure I'm gonna get a straight answer here, so I'm gonna do some quick back-of-the-envelope here, and I'm thinking that that's about eight months of, of, of budget. Okay, you have eight months of, of, of budget reserve in your account right now. David, what, when we adopted our policy a few years ago in terms of our, of our unreserved fund, I know we did a percentage, but we also linked, I think, a number of months to that, if I believe, and I wanna say it was, it was no more than six months, if, was it?
Well, right now, we're averaging at, at our unrestricted fund balance, it's equal to about two months of, of cash reserves, only two, two months. So it's, and that's about 15% of our total expenditures in the general fund alone.
So, so two months, eight months, is, is that, is that generally what I'm, I'm understanding?
Yeah, now, deep in mind, we...
At some aggregate level, that, that's what it represents.
And, and we have, we had to eliminate fixed asset replacement fund, you know, when it was in a negative. There's, most of our capital project funds are on a pay-as-you-go, you know, together with proceeds. So currently, we're, we are not building up reserves for future asset replacement, as we once did back in the early 2000s.
Well, I, I guess, in, in terms of, I'll just give you my direction right now, and that is, I know 33,000 isn't a major tax increase. That looks like that's money that could be pulled from, for this next budget year, pulled from their unreserved balance fund to cover that shortfall, and with, with no increase. And so that's what I would be in favor of.
Alderman Black, and then Alderman Fazini.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I have, I guess I have two comments. Number one is, is there monies put aside for potential capital improvements in the library right now that are sitting? 'Cause I'm, I'm having a hard time trying to find it on, on the spreadsheet here. If, because I keep hearing numbers thrown around, they seem exceedingly high, but...
Well, it isn't, it isn't on the budget spreadsheet, but that 1.7 million is set aside for capital, in a separate capital fund.
Okay. And, okay, so then, that being said, we, we can't use any of that towards this 33,000 increase, or is that completely out of the question?
It's a designated fund for capital improvement.
Okay. All right. The other thing, too, that I wanted to note is that, while I, I definitely appreciate looking at this as a very clear Excel spreadsheet, I just have a lot of little questions about specific amounts that are on here. For example, you know, employee relations, you know, I'm, I'm not sure what that means, and I, I guess I'd like to see more detail before I can get behind an overall tax increase for what seems to be a, you know, amount that could be found elsewhere.
City Manager David Hale, you wanted to weigh in?
Just very briefly, within, you know, the next 30 days, you'll be seeing the comprehensive annual financial report for the city and the library, as we have the auditors. That'd be a great time, 'cause that has balance sheet information, these reserves numbers, so very shortly you'll be seeing that before you have to adopt property tax levy, and I think that'd be a great time to get a little more clarity on these other reserve numbers.
Thank you. I'm just used to seeing it in a more detailed manner, and I don't think anything wonky is going on, but I like to be able to look at all that data before making a decision.
Thank you. Alderman Fazini, last but not least.
Okay. The two months versus eight months, based on that explanation from the city manager, I think is apples to oranges. We're, we're comparing that budget with our budget that has negative balances that didn't get included or should be included, and they didn't have negative balances. The second comment I'd make is, while the city was having financial problems five years ago, four years ago, six years ago, the library was, the library stewardship of its financials was being done very well. And since they did very well, they built up some funds, and now we're looking to penalize them for having done well, and I don't think that's right.
And I just, Mayor, I, I was just responding to the alderman's question. I wasn't trying to make any kind of comparative apples to oranges or apples to apples. Thank you.
Or pineapples, we're not doing any of that. No fruit tonight. Okay. Alderman Milowambway, 'cause we have run our time. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna talk mangoes here for a second. So I, I guess you haven't had an opportunity to explain why you wanted the $33,000. I wanted to give you that opportunity to, to say that, and maybe talk about the library and the things that you're looking forward to.
Well, the library has, you know, I mean, the last year, I think we transferred about $100,000 into this capital fund. We, you know, we're exploding, and, and the library's very busy. We're going to need space in the future. We're trying to plan for that in a measured, thoughtful way. We aren't transferring any money this year, and we have absorbed that money into the budget. The city council sets the wage and benefits for the library as well, and so that is where all of this 33,000 is coming from, is, you know, is planned wage and, and health benefits coverage.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do you, would you like, well, we're not gonna do an official vote here.
Mayor, I was gonna ask if you were gonna go around the table.
That's what I was gonna wonder, is if... That's what I was going to wonder is if, if you have some feedback, um, and if we can just basically say your, your general reaction in, um, 30 seconds or less, if we can start, so that you can get an idea of whether or not this council is behind this property tax increase. Alderman Fruain.
I feel the library has been extremely well managed, very fiscally responsible. I think this levy, uh, this, uh, request is very reasonable, and I would support it as presented to us. And, and applaud them for their financial management over the last several years.
Alderman Fazini.
Ditto.
Alderman Black.
I need more convincing, but I'm pretty sure I can get on board with some more data.
Alderman, Alderwoman Schmidt.
I support this.
Alderwoman McDade.
I have one question. I just realized I didn't ask, so if you don't mind, sorry. Uh, it's real quick. I noticed that your surplus the last, three of the last four years was actually quite a bit more than the amount that you're asking for the increase for. It, in some years, your surplus appears to be in the range of a couple hundred thousand dollars. Is that something that is, I mean, how does that happen? Is that just cost savings throughout the year, or?
It is just cost savings throughout the year. It's difficult to project heating and electricity and, you know, things like that. So...
So when you have a surplus like that, then, then what is, what's done with that?
We have a policy that half of it goes into the orbital fund and half goes into our operating maintenance fund to give us a operating cushion.
Okay, thank you. Alderwoman Sterns.
Well, I'm a big patron of the library. I'm down there all the time. And I see how much it, it's, you know, it really is bursting at the seams. And I applaud you for, you know, I mean, I think we're kind of talking stability downtown at the moment, and I like that. Um, because I know you're doing a lot with what you've got, and I, and I like that. And I also don't want to, you know, punish you for what's really been a very, I think, my fiscally pretty, pretty lean, um, thing, picture. I think, I think maybe you even went down one year.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, okay. More than one. So, I mean, we're talking about 33,000. Is that what we're talking about?
Yes.
So as a percentage, I mean, I mean, that's not, that's not a penny to the homeowner. I mean, it's miniscule. Um, you know, I'm just a fan of the library's service to the inner city, you know, the whole, I mean, just people who need some free stuff. And they, they get it at the library. I mean, the computer services, all of it. So, you know, I, I love the library, and that's about all I can say for right now. That's not a, you know, a firm, but I, I really do. Thank you.
Alderman Milowamboy.
Well, having heard your explanation for why you wanted it and that it's related to some of our council policies and it's all about wages, so I, I think I can get behind it.
Alderman Sage?
Yeah.
Okay. No. Alderman Lauer?
Yeah, the only thing I can say is we, again, we need to look at perspective here a little bit. Um, many of our citizens have not had a wage increase. As a matter of fact, many of them have had a wage decrease in a, in a large manner in the last four or five years. Okay? And, uh, I, I would advise you to look in your budget someplace and find the money elsewhere right now. In principle, I don't think my folks can afford a tax increase. I'm not willing to look at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I think you have your, uh, dis- difference of opinions, but, uh, anyway, we will talk to you soon. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Could I invite you, um, Alderman Black, if you'd like specifics, I'd be glad to answer that any time later.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. Although, Georgia, if you, whatever specifics you might provide to Alderman Black, I think probably the entire council would, would be, it'd be useful to give that to the entire council with respect to them. Thank you. Moving, uh, right along, we have the 2013 estimated property tax levy, and we have a presentation. And I turn over our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Uh, going to ask Patty Lynn to come forward. Hopefully, you've had a chance to review her, her presentation, but we want to just walk, uh, remind everyone about the pro- the property tax levy timeline, and then we'll get into, uh, some additional information. Um, and then as she finishes her comments, I'll add a few others at the tail end. So Patty, if you want to go ahead with your presentation.
Sure. Um, I know many of you have seen this before, so I'll try to keep it brief. It's just kind of a background and history on the property tax levy. So, uh, using the PowerPoint, um, just kind of whipping through it. Um, we've got some definitions here. I'll just point out two of them. The EAV, which is what we then, um, the rate is applied to, which gets us to the dollar levy that the, the council levies, um, is only one-third of the market value of your home at the time that it's assessed. So when I come to you in November with the estimated tax levy, what I'll have is a preliminary EAV number, which isn't finalized till sometime later. So, um, I look to you guys to set the dollar amount, which is put over that preliminary EAV, which shoots out a rate. That's the basic tax formula. But the EAV, just keep in mind, is only one-third of the value of the taxpayer's home. So then we multiply that times the tax rate. Um, we have, um, proposed, um, within here, and as you know, we had proposed the pension increase here, uh, not just for the min- uh, the pension, excuse me, pension funding policy, but also the minimum contribution next year will go up about 1.5 million. So either way, we're kind of looking at a 1.5 for next year in the pension, and that would be, uh, potentially more than a 5% increase. If that is the case with the property tax levy, I have the timeline here, and we are required to have a public hearing under truth and taxation law. So the timeline would stay the same, whether it's a, a flat rate, the residents get their tax bill. We're only one of nine overlapping tax districts. And so regardless of what we do with our levy, there are changes over and across those many overlapping task, tax districts for our citizens. Um, in the past, we have allocated the tax levy in the following manner: general corporate, which has included fire protection, police protection, and public parks, the library, police and fire, and, um, civilian employee pension, social security, and then bond and bonds and interest. Um, we only, um, levy for a very minor portion of our total, uh, general obligation debt here. Just to note that when you do levy, um, for pensions, um, you do, that does guarantee that that money will be given to pensions. Um, just, uh, moving on, our full assessed value, the EAV is always around a million something, a million eight, but our full value of properties in, uh, the city of Bloomington are between five, four, and, you know, most recently gauged at 5.3 billion dollars. So we have a lot out there, but we're only taxing at about 1.8. Um, and here you see that there. The preliminary EAV is 1.768, and it's come up slightly. Um, it's a three-year average kind of on the market. And so you can see that we kind of bottomed out. We probably hit the floor in the 2012 levy and that final EAV. From 11 to 12, we dropped about 38 million dollars. And now we're kind of just coming up a little bit. But when you're talking about millions on billion, I like to say that we remain flat. The direct tax rate, again, is part of that three-part equation. So it goes up and down based on not only the dollar amount that the council would like to raise, but also that fluctuating denominator, that EAV. So the rate tends to change. Um, and you can see last year, um, in previous years, it's gone down. Um, and in 2012, it just went up very slightly, and we have not yet determined 2013. The taxes levied, you can see the history here of the taxes levied. Um, back in 2005, the dollar amount that council would levy is about 17 million. Over the years, that has grown. There was a particular jump in the, I would pay attention to the tax year here. Um, in the 2011, 2009 timeframe, that's when the city was having some financial, significant financial problems, and I believe there was a big increase in pensions at that time. So the city brought the levy up about 8%. Uh, from that time forward, the council has kept the levy flat up until last year, when the levy was actually decreased by about $400,000. So taxes on our part of the overlapping tax district, excuse me, district, potentially decreased for each taxpayer last year and didn't remain flat as it did in previous years. So again, in two, the two, the 2015 budget, um, it's the 2013 tax year that we received the funds in 2015. So we have yet to determine that, and that's kind of why we had the pension dialogue tonight. And, um, I'll be coming to you on the November meeting for the estimated tax levy. We always get pretty much 100% of all of our taxes that we levy. Um, if we don't, they will lien your home. And so generally, everyone pays their taxes, and it's considered a very, um, strong and nonelastic revenue. Again, kind of why we had proposed the pension in that area. Oh, I think that's, oh, this taxes collected and the taxes levy are virtually the same. So that is my, um, quick overview of how levying taxes work. And then I just have, um, a quick spreadsheet on, again, the history of the levy and how, from '05 right through what we had kind of proposed, um, and what that would do and what it would mean to the homeowner. And I left that on your, um, in front of each of you earlier. So you can see the dollar increase and the percentage increase by levy year. The library is included in this, uh, total levy. And in 2012, you can see the major decrease. You can see the flattening here. You can see the jump, the flattening, and then the decrease. So if we were to raise the pensions up by 1.5 million, of course, it would increase the percentage very high, and this is what it would mean for the taxpayer. However, if you were to keep the tax levy flat and you chose, you could still increase the pensions here, we would have to take something out. One of these components would have to go out and be funded by some of the other general fund tax revenues that we have. And so I think that's kind of how we ended up dialoguing about utility tax and some of the other taxes that are available for the pension. So this doesn't show the increase in pension, but, um, we could increase the pensions here by 1.5 and then take some, one of these other components out. So you are not locked into the tax levy. It was a staff recom- ref- recommendation, but you are not locked into the tax levy.
Just to clarify for...
Yes.
Someone with a $160,000... Someone with a $160,000 home, if we upped the property tax levy in order to fund the pension proposal, would go about $42 a year?
Yes. If you kept every other component in there, yes, it would go up about $42.
So about $3 in sum a month. Okay. Thank you.
And Mayor, let me again stress, um, even if you set aside the whole pension funding policy and everything we've talked about, and we do nothing more than maintain and go with the state minimum, police and fire pension, pension annual required contributions, we have to come up with an additional 1.5 to 1.6 million. Those are the early indications. Now, you might ask, well, why such a big jump? Uh, you may want to go back to 2009, uh, just at the height of the recession, uh, we had, for whatever reason, the state numbers were showing a big increase in pension funding that year. At that time, the council decided, uh, let's raise the property tax, but its only purpose was to fund the increased pension costs that year. That did go up pretty substantially. Uh, now again, we don't necessarily have to repeat that, but, uh, again, if we only go with the state minimum, somewhere we've got to come up with 1.5 million, either in the property tax levy, either in other revenue, or in a cut, you know, et cetera, et cetera. And as Patty said, we can always, if, if the policy is to keep the property tax levy flat, we'll have to redo some of those, uh, non-pension-related expenditure items, and then that will be kind of, will begin with that, that much less money in the general fund for some of those, you know, general categories. So I, I, I want to, last year, we were in kind of an enviable position because we were seeing some decreases in pension funding requirements according to the state minimum. Um, if anything, I think that's kind of been one of these, uh, you know, non-consistent variables, you know, by sometimes always relying on the actuary, the state, things like that. Um, and the pension policy tries to get a little bit more consistency. So, uh, the big news is we have to increase the two police and fire pension light items collectively by 1.5 million. Um, and we have those options, as we talked earlier, uh, on how to address that. Um, Mayor, we had one other thing, and, and if you want, let's just finish out. I, I did ask Patty just give a few highlights on the current fiscal year. You know, we've, uh, what's a very, you know, a couple of minutes just on how are we doing revenue-wise, expenditure-wise, and then we just want to remind the council what are some of those big, uh, potential, uh, you know, uh, financial challenges for next year, just to try and bring back some context. Again, it's, it's unfortunate, property tax is separated from budget adoption. So unfortunately, you're always dealing with this major revenue source, uh, separate and apart from the budget. So, uh, but we'll keep it short. Patty, if you want to go ahead and just give some of those, um, big numbers.
I, I will keep it very short. Um, on the current year, um, expenditures look like they're moving right along with budget. Um, we do have some, uh, slowing revenues in sales tax and home real sales tax. They're running, um, we only have four months of data available to us, um, at this point. The Department of Revenue always posts a couple months late, but if that trend was to continue, uh, we would potentially lose about $800,000. However, the income tax on the flip side is running very high, which is a very positive sign for the local economy. And that would almost completely wash, um, that if that trend was to continue. So, um, net-net, I think, early projections for 2014 year-end, I think we would break even. I'm not anticipating a surplus unless there was a lot of savings on the expenditure side. So in pre- prior years, we've had some tremendous surpluses, um, generating from the sales tax. Um, I'm not sure what that anomaly is. I'm watching it very carefully. But, uh, our rating agencies pointed out that if our income tax is going up about 13% higher than it was this time last year, uh, and we have a lower-than-average national and state, um, unemployment rate here, that that's very, very good. Not only are our citizens employed in general, but they're being paid more. So that's a real positive trend. Um, just fast forwarding to 2015 budget.
Can I just say, we will be bringing to you a much more comprehensive mid-year financial report for the general fund and all funds, October, the end of October, uh, is the half year mark of our fiscal year. So next, uh, month, we'll be bringing that report together with the annual, uh, audit re- reports too. So now go on to next year if you want. Thanks.
And again, I just want to reiterate, I don't feel like we're in a dan- in danger at all. I just want to, you know, kind of set the expectation that I'm not anticipating a large surplus at year-end. Um, going into the 2015 budget, just kind of looking around at the general fund and, you know, I haven't completed a lot of analysis, but we know, we've said before that they, we think the overall salaries in all funds would increase maybe salary and benefits about 2%, $2 million blended rate. Um, those are very, very preliminary. Um, you know, that you've got to take into account the health insurance rates and all the employer pays and everything that goes up in new tax laws and, you know, the salaries, um, per contract, et cetera. But about a mil- but about a million of that $2 million increase really just belongs alone to the general fund. Um, in addition to that, I've, I've put down things that I've heard talk about, so potential exposure, uh, perhaps, we know about the pension increase, 1.5 million. I've, I've heard talk about maybe engine company three, if we were to put nine, uh, firemen 24/7, engine company three, that's about 1.5 million dollars in added salary and benefit per year. Um, in addition to that, we have the new, uh, bond. Um, net-net, I think it'll be under a million dollars. And then, uh, the solid waste fund, um, at the end of this year will deplete its fund balance. And so we have an additional, not only the 1.3 that we've sent them in this year's budget, but it would go up by 1.2 next year, um, potential. Again, these are very preliminary. I, I always try to present the worst-case scenario, just so there are no surprises.
Just to clarify that, so then the solid waste fund deficit would be about two and a half million dollars?
In total, yes, it would be. And I've got to go back. I mean, we're just finalizing the 2013 audits. You know, we, we live in about three fiscal years at one time in finance, and then, you know, we've cut, we're only so far into the new year. It's very hard to predict. But, you know, that's, that and stormwater are really are two kind of concerns with, the city's come a long way. Really want to emphasize that, a long way in healing financially. Uh, but stormwater and solid waste are two, some of the areas I really, really, uh, look at very cautiously and carefully. So I just wanted to put that out there, that, you know, for some reason, they spend all their budget, that's budgeted, um, and so forth, and they, they would deplete that fund balance, and potentially we'd be adding another 1.2. So in total, you're talking about, you know, a six, just on those factors alone in the general fund, or like a $6 million increase, um, or a 7% increase in the budget. I'm sure nobody wants to do that. So then we have to look at, you know, potential refining our costs and then looking at potential revenues or prioritizing what, you know, what we would like to do. And then again, this isn't the full picture. This is a lot of the big ones. I didn't mention capital because we're still putting that together. I didn't mention capital because we're still putting that together. But what we do is we transfer about four million dollars out of the general fund into the capital improvement fund for cash for capital. In addition to that, the water fund, sewer fund, you know, different people, uh, pay their own capital. And so in this year, between fund balance and cash transfers from various funds, in the two thousand fourteen budget, we have about sixteen million dollars in cash that we're giving for capital projects, minus the bond that we just issued, but in, that was in the two thousand. So that's what we know now that we have some very, uh, we have some very big measured costs. And, um, I'm very quickly gathering the preliminary data so that I can understand what it means in two thousand fifteen for critical projects in all areas. Then I'm going to look at how can we pay for that before I come back to you? What can we do? And, um, you know, I'm guessing there's some debt in our future. How would we fit that in? We've got a lot out there, but we can manage it if we come up with a plan and, you know, we can, we can do this. We can, we can get there. But we do have some exposure on the infrastructure side and, you know, to Councilman Fruein's point earlier and Councilman Fazini, I, I almost think of the debt as more kind of reserved for that, although that's certainly council prerogative. But I think that's a, you know, a good place to go because financing is good as we know. But those are some of the things that are out there. So does that general fund transfer increase? We give more cash for capital? Or do we, uh, increase the general fund for potentially more debt service to address some of those really critical, um, issues that we have that? And so, you know, spreading the pain will be a lot, a lot of that plan. We will, we will try to soften as much as possible and certainly we will continue to refine as the process goes forward. But those are a lot of the things, um, that are kind of coming your way.
Okay, I believe Alderman Sage had the floor first, and then Alderman Fazini.
Just, just a couple of comments. First of all, Patty, a- as usual, thank you for your presentation. If memory serves me right, this is usually the time of year we start to put this kind of information out on the web, out on the website for people to see kind of the conversations that we're having about the property tax levy. And, and, and so maybe just a couple of suggestions based on a couple of the slides here. If, if, um, first of all, when we talk a little bit about EAV, I think highlighting how the, the assessor's role in that. I mean, that is a, a separate elected, uh, you know, official, a township official, not even part of the city of Bloomington. And, and the reason I'm pointing these things out is if there's one conversation I have on an ongoing basis with folks in my ward, it's trying to just make sure that folks kind of have line of sight through that, through that property tax process, how it works. Okay? And so a lot of times they don't even know, they, they think that, that the full levy is, is set here within the city council, when in fact, we set the tax rate, assessor sets EAV, right? The other thing is you have the, you had kind of in descending order, those property tax bodies up there. I think in the past, we've seen pie charts. Jim likes to mention the dollar bill that we've seen around here from time to time. I think mentioning that, that the school districts take about between what, sixty-five and seventy cents of every dollar. I think ours is around fifteen cents. I think city and library, I'm not sure, uh, what it is this year. And the rest of those, uh, create that line of sight as much as we can because otherwise it just seemed to, seemed to be more, just, you know, kind of normalized across that list, you know? Whatever we can do to create that line of sight for, for folks to understand how the process works and, and who is getting the, the lion's share, if you will, of their property tax dollar. Because see, at the top of the tax bill, it says city of Bloomington, right? So they think that's us, y- you know, not the, not the nine bodies that, that you mentioned here, you know? So anything we can do that, that's, there's always goodness in that because that, it, it helps have a- as many of our folks be informed about that as we can, so thanks.
Thank you. Alderman Fazini, and then Alderman Fruein.
Patty, you mentioned that the, uh, debt service or the bond was just under a million dollars, I think? And the projection was about a million one fifty, so you must have got a pretty good rate.
Well, um, that's still the projection I looked, or the way that debt services calculated by Mezro and by us is slightly different. But we did, um, almost double our savings on the refunding. We haven't sold the new money yet, we'll be selling that on the twenty ninth. So a bit of good news, we were projecting the two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars in savings. It turned out to be four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in projected savings. So that was a wonderful win for us. And because of that market condition, uh, when we go out for the ten million, it, we will be received more favorably. And, uh, the competitive sale also, you, um, yielded thirty-three thousand dollars in a bidding war. It was very exciting. We had seven bidders, it was for fifteen minutes, and everybody was, they can't see what they're bidding. And they have, you know, high and low, they, they just know they're not going to get the bid. And so constantly they're changing for, it was just great. There, there was so much demand for our bonds. I was so proud. And we saved thirty-three thousand dollars in fifteen minutes. It was, it was very exciting. And, and not only that, all the underwriters who approached us got an opportunity to bid on a very good investment, the city of Bloomington.
Yeah, she used the term net debt service cost. And, and again, that, that one sale is on the refund. The ten million street resurfacing sale will come up.
On the twenty ninth, and we're going again, do the competitive bid. So if you guys want to watch it with me, or I can send you the link, you can do that. But, uh, I anticipate, we've gotten very good feedback, very good feedback, and I'm excited, maybe it will be even lower.
Alderman, uh, Fazini, you're still the floor.
I just want to finish. The, uh, comment earlier by an alderman was that we really wanted to get a much higher bond rating. There isn't a much higher bond rating. I mean, we're double A plus, all that's left is triple A. And our bonds in the last three times that we've sold them have pretty much traded as triple A. They, you know, so I, I don't worry very much about our bond rating getting increased. It'll happen naturally, but even if it doesn't, it's not harming us on the interest rates that we're getting.
Alderman Fruein, and then Alderwoman Schmidt.
Uh, Mayor, just the, uh, usual pitch and echo Alderman Sage's comments about communication and dollar bills and pie charts and so forth. I think they're just a terrible misconception with a lot of residents that a lot, a lot more of their dollars are going to the city of Bloomington. And so to the extent that we can educate them, it's a constant battle. But one question I always ask people when they call me, is I always get into the tax discussion and say, do you know what portion of your tax bills go into city Bloomington? So I try to do it one person at a time, but, uh, and as this goes out to public, um, the overlapping tax districts, I'm glad you've got those referenced. I just add and edit that we ought to include unit five on there too. I think there, if I have this right, I think there are more unit five students that live in Bloomington than normal. Anyway, it's a, it's a significant number. And with all the conversation going on in the community about schools wanting money, the transit wanting money, soccer wanting money, and the list goes on. I mean, the headlines for the next four months are going to be, this organization wants a X percent increase. And that's going to be the headline for four months. So as clear as we can be on where we fit into this puzzle, it's critical. So, thank you.
Thank you. Couldn't agree more. Alderwoman Schmidt.
Um, just a request, David, um, we have Patty Linz prepared for us, um, a, uh, estimated, uh, increases on property taxes if it were to go up one point five million. And I'm wondering if, as we think about all the different things we have to pay for, could we slice that down a little bit more? Like what would it be if it was just a half a million dollars, million dollars? You know, so at, at this point, we're looking at a, i- if we were to go with this, and I, I'm not hearing that we are, but, um, in basically a six point five percent property tax increase. But it's not an all or nothing proposition, right? It could be, i- if we had to, when we look at stormwater and other capital improvements, I, I guess I'd like to get my head around what, what other kinds of mixes we might put together. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Comments? Feedback? Ald- uh, Alderman, city manager David Hales.
And, and I would just ask, uh, the more you could be in, you know, communications with the mayor, myself, or both, between now and November twelfth, the better. Because, uh, again, we, uh, while we might be able to slip one week if there's no public hearing, we may not be able to go much beyond that. So again, we're ending this discussion with some discussion. But, um, I'm not taken away of it any clear, uh, position of where the majority wants to go with the estimated property tax levy. Not that I was anticipating it, but again, between now and that first meeting in November, our challenge is, do we bring back one? Do we bring back several? Do we bring back a half dozen? You know, the more we can kind of consolidate and start to get a better idea of, if, if nothing else, where do you, where are you on an estimated property tax levy? The better. Keep it in mind, we've got to increase those two pensions irregardless by one point five, one point six million, even if we have no, uh, fire and police pension funding policy. So anyway, just leave that with you, and I'll, we'll be reaching out, you know, for a little bit more one-on-one discussion.
Right, and, and certainly the information that, that I, as I'm working with David and that I have it, I will be sharing it with all of you and having, uh, conversations. I've got a couple of lunch appointment schedules already. Definitely, we need, the, the staff needs to have direction. Frankly, it empowers us too. Because if we, if we can, I mean, even if it's five-four or six-three, if, if the majority in the council is giving direction to the staff, we're more, we're stepping up to the plate. And I believe Alderman Fazini, and then Alderman, Alderman Sage?
David, maybe something that would help me is, is maybe if we can summarize in an email to the council, maybe the, a handful of options that I know that, that Terry addressed when we were going around the, the, the horseshoe here. I, I think that, I don't know about anybody else, I think that would probably help me give you a little clearer feedback on that.
It certainly can hurt. Thank you. Uh, Alderman Fazini.
Yeah, just a clarification. On city council meetings, we are given the, the right or the, yeah, the right to ask questions beforehand so that the staff isn't surprised when the questions come up. Uh, I did that for this meeting, but I didn't get any answers. Are, are we going to do that for this meeting now that it's a committee of the whole? Or for the other committees, it got to be too out of wieldy, I think.
I did email you this afternoon, and I know it was late, but basically we were running out of time.
Okay.
Yes, eventually, but, um, you know, maybe that's a good plug for customer service and the need for more resources.
I'm sorry I asked. On that cheery note, let's, um, thank you so much, and I appreciate it. And, and thank you, David. I appreciate all your help on this. We had, have had extensive meetings on this. We have one last thing, I believe. Scott, come on down. The Price is Right, you look like you're on TV. There you go. Uh, we have an electronic voting training here. So we have fifteen minutes budgeted, we're already four minutes over.
Mayor, we need to make room, if, if Jennifer would mind moving over one seat, we need to put Scott eventually right up there next to you, because, yeah, is that where you want to be? Okay. Just some, we want to put the electronic voting in place next, next Monday, which means Mayor Pro Tem Karen Schmidt is going to have to operate. Maybe you want to switch places with the mayor. All right, Lee, as long as the two of you are watching. So Scott, go ahead and take us through some, some quick training and a couple of test votes.
Working on electronics so that the, the citizens out, you know, sitting out front can see it. You drive it, assuming that you're willing to take, take command of that.
Is there a speed limit?
If you, if you, we just touched on voting controls here.
Voting, okay.
That simple.
Oh, holy cow.
Here is a start vote.
Start vote.
Once the mayor hits the start vote, you'll all see that the buttons in front of you are now flashing. We basically have.
What buttons are, are they?
Yeah, do you see the, the, this, this black pad in front of, in front of you?
Oh, I, oh, oh, that one, okay.
See that? And what it does, when, when we start the vote, the, the buttons just start to flash. There really are only three options, the aye, nay, and abstain. Those are the three choices to, to be made. While the vote is open, you can actually, you know, if you mishit, you meant to say aye, and I hit nay instead, you can hit, you know, aye again, it'll just flip over, you'll notice that that, that that'll happen. So if you all are willing, just go ahead and make a selection, like we're doing a vote.
He's voting twice. He's, this is in Chicago, Scott. Okay, and then, now if, if I'm ever breaking a tie, I don't, how do I do this?
You don't have one, you just have, you use these buttons here.
Oh, I see, okay.
So that, that'll be your vote. But, and you'll, you'll see here that at this point, everyone has voted. You can see, you know, how, how everyone voted. If you then stop vote, go ahead and stop the vote.
I think, whatever it is carried.
Yeah, so, so the, the voting is open until you hit stop vote.
Okay.
At that point, all the votes are locked in, um, and then you're just.
Oh, it's idiot proof for me, six to three, okay.
Exactly, and then you can just hit, see, right now it says it's not showing on display. If you touch that to show it, then it will, it'll pop up up here.
Wow, magically delicious. Okay, here we go.
And I know that, um, city clerk and, and, and the public, they, you know, they've kind of asked that that stays up there for just a little while. So it'll, it would stay there until mayor, you, if you start another vote.
Starting the vote.
Then it'll just wipe everything out. You'll see those, all the votes went away. And so it's open again, and if we were all to vote again, you know, they can, they can theoretically pop in or, you know, if you just hit that button again, it'll, it'll flip.
You voted for Judy.
So, so the, the key there is, you know, you have a choice to, you know, when, when to show it and when to stop the vote.
Okay, now what does, how does this interact with Madam Clerk when she's calling the roll? Or do we do that? We don't do that anymore.
It would theoretically do away with that.
Theoretically, real time, and we can, wow, we might get out a little early in the future.
Yeah, the city ordinance has been amended, so we're, we're now good to go on electronic voting. The city clerk will not be calling names. If, if you do it like city Peoria mayor does, you know, that over there, the mayor says, please cast your votes. And then I think he says, you know, a- after waiting, then they'll say, you know, voting is, is, I don't know, completed. And then, you know, show.
Six to three or five-four or whatever.
And show the results.
Is that the only person that's going to show up? It, it, it could show up over here too, absolutely. I didn't happen to turn it on when I was in the back.
If it would.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
And how long, how long are you waiting then between casting the vote and showing it?
I think that's one thing that the mayor, the mayor pro tem will have control over. You know, you may want to, you can watch. You'll know when they've all been cast. You can say, you know, the votes are cast, and, and then you can go from there. If, if you have some, uh, people who are still undecided, I think that's where you can kind of prompt them. But going forward, you know, we probably ought to say, let's, you know, keep it within ten seconds or something, something real quick.
So we could, any clarification about what, I mean, we have never abstained on votes.
Yes, we have. We kind of, in this first meeting.
Okay, so in fourteen years, except for once, we have never abstained on votes.
But if you leave though, right? Like if you're, if you're voting on something.
But you're not voting at all then.
Not voting at all.
Well, it depends. Under state law, aldermen must vote. If the law states that you must have a certain number of affirmative votes and you abstain, your vote is counted as a nay. If the law is silent and you abstain, you are saying, throw my vote to the majority. You don't have the option of sitting on this dais and saying, I refuse to vote. That's not allowed. You can recuse yourself and leave, but you cannot sit up here and not vote. That's under state law. You must vote. If you are present, you must vote.
I understand that. I guess I'm, I'm looking for a little bit of collective agreement about when we would say, I'm abstaining, as opposed to recusing yourself to vote because of consent.
It could be for a right.
And I think that's where working with the attorney will help to provide you. I think the one thing staff can do is make sure that as these certain votes are coming up, we continue to prompt in the written material, you know, what we need. Like in some cases, we do need, let's see, is it super majority? So we'll kind of put together that little cheat sheet, you know, with information. Now, the other thing too is, is, is in a week, even though Karen, you'll be mayor pro tem, as I can recall Tracy, she still votes on each of those items. Not, not to break a tie, but as a regular alderman. Yeah. So, um, that's, um.
And then if that's four-four, then what happens?
I think it fails in that, in that case.
It doesn't pass.
It doesn't pass, right, yeah. All legislatures require a majority, you know, the ties are dead.
Scott, are we able to take a screenshot of these suckers and put them up on the website of each, like, vote with a tie due a hyperlink to the ordinance?
We actually will be recording the, the vote as another window. So when we're taking the vote, I think the, the shot that we have chosen is an overall shot of the dais with the vote right in the center, so like it would cover up the lectern. So then, you know, as you're watching the stream or the archive, you'll see the vote right there.
That's tasteful, I like that. How about just one more test vote? Let's have Karen move over there.
Oh, yeah, Karen.
Give her a shot. So Scott, go ahead and help walk us through one more test vote.
And now everyone's lights should be flashing.
I'm going to vote for Jim.
Okay.
And Karen, you'll see them pop in. You know, when, these all say voted now, so that's great. But, you know, if they don't.
Old mister over there, okay, stop vote. And then he abstains. Nice.
Greg must have been listening in the back, he put it up on these displays.
And then, and then if I do that, it takes it down, but I'd leave it up for some period of time so people have a, we have a chance, people have a chance to stand. I made him a request when I talked with the mayor, and talking with clerks in cities that have electronic voting, either the mayor or the clerk will also announce the vote and say, this motion passed by a vote of 6 to 3, and the ayes were, and they basically read off the non-pervailing side, so if you have sight impaired people in the audience, they know what's going on. If you have someone watching at, at home on a web stream, they're not going to see that very well, and so that's one thing that they do. The motion passed unanimously, the motion passed by a vote of 8 to 1.
They read off the losing side? The non-pervailing side?
Because, otherwise, you'd have to say the vote was 8 to 1, and the ayes were, da-da-da-da-da-da, and the nay was, and so they, the non-pervailing side is the lower number of votes. So they will say, the motion passed by a vote of 9 to 1, and the ayes were. If a motion fails, the motion failed by a vote of 1 to 8, and the a was, and it's about trying to keep your meeting moving, you are basically, because that's what people want to know, who voted against, not who voted for, and so, that's generally the question that I get asked.
Well, they might have put the tax increase.
A little bit of prompting over there, Tracy.
Any questions about this? And I may need to talk to you, Karen, about how this works after next week, because I won't be here.
I, I think you got it covered, Mayor.
Yeah, okay, so with a clear results, and then start vote again? And we start again? Okay, easy enough. Thank you.
The last council meeting, I went on, and I couldn't get.
Thank Jennifer.
Was it just me?
Yeah, I'll have to ask you about that one.
Well, that's an individual question, so, we'll go ahead and adjourn Alderman.